Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Hold on one second. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Chatham Select Board Meeting of May 2, 2023. Let the record show it started promptly at 5:32 pursuant to Governor Healey's March 29, 2023, signing of the Acts of 2023, extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20, until March 31, 2025. This meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings as provided for in the order. Reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 203, 386-491-POUND, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as is possible. First item of business this evening is to establish a quorum. I'll do so, Mr. Metters.
Present.
Mr. Shell.
Present.
Ms. Davis.
Present.
Mr. De Castro.
Present.
And the Chair, Mr. Dykens, is present as well. Next item on our agenda, the movement and the approval of the minutes of April 18, 2023, a motion, please.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Metters.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Shell. Edits, hands raised, suggestions, nothing? Okay. All righty, we'll take a vote. Mr. De Castro.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Abstain.
Mr. Shell.
Aye.
Mr. Metters.
Aye.
And the Chair says aye as well. Minutes of April 25, 2023.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Metters.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Shell. Items, Mr. De Castro and then Mr. Shell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have one item on page two, the second paragraph from the bottom. At the end, I would like to add this clause, "And would avoid the imposition of an navigation easement," period, "and would avoid the imposition of an aviation easement."
That's in the second paragraph to the bottom, Dean?
Yeah. Good. After the word individually.
Right.
That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Shell?
On page, these are all on page three, top paragraph, penultimate line, after the word "the" and before the word "identification," I want to insert the phrase, quote, "decision whether to undertake." And then I would add at the end of that paragraph, after the word "obstructions," by the Airport Commission.
Okay.
Then, in same page, second paragraph, third line, inside of the parenthetical, I would add, after the quote, the quotation marks, add a comma and then et cetera. There were other deletions, there were other changes.
Yep.
And then on page three, in the second paragraph, in the next to the last line, I would strike the remainder of the paragraph after the word "environment" and insert, quote, "for reaching mutually consensual arrangements and does not eliminate any applicable statutory requirements."
Got that, John.
And then in the third paragraph, the next to the next to the last line that begins accessing, that ends, the sentence that ends, "to analyze any tree," I would, I would say, "any trees or other vegetation," period. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shell. Any other comments on these minutes, the 25th? Okay, we'll take a vote. Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Mr. Shell.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. De Castro.
Aye.
And the Chair says aye as well. Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is public announcements and agenda item requests. I know we have some announcements and/or requests from the board itself this evening, so I, Mr. Shell, I believe you have one, and Mr. Metters, and then Jill.
Yeah, I, I'll say, finally got around to watching the staff preview for the, for the annual meeting. It's about an hour and 55 minutes, and I just want to encourage everybody who has the time, or maybe even if you don't, to watch that. It's a really, really terrific effort on the part of the staff. It, I don't know whether you read the warrant, but as between reading the warrant and watching this YouTube production that involved the staff, Jill, the Channel 18 folks, it really is a first-rate job, and I just want to commend everybody that had a part of it. So, thank you for all of that, and I urge anybody who can to watch all or any part of it that you're particularly interested in.
Thank you, Mr. Shell. Mr. Metters?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is my monthly reminder about various openings that are going to be on our boards, committees, and commissions for the town. I'm not going to formally read all the openings at the moment, only because this is the time of year that we reach out to members who are coming up for reappointment to find out if they're interested in serving or not serving, so there's going to be a lot of flow in that list right now. But if you are interested, please consider serving, because the town would be very grateful for it. I do want to highlight one committee in particular that I recently learned, that two of the committee members will not be seeking a reappointment. It is our Independence Day Parade Committee. It's a five-member committee currently, so at the end of June, we will be down to three members. We do have a July 4th parade queued up, and those two members will fall through for those few days after their appointment expires. But I would encourage anyone who's interested in the Parade Committee to maybe look to volunteer a little bit this year and get a little bit of experience under their belts, because we've got two openings, and we definitely want to have a parade next year. So feel free to reach out to me, reach out to the town, forget Talent Forum, you can pick one up or download it online. So just consider serving the town, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Corey. And Jill?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just wanted to put out a reminder about the annual town meeting for this Saturday, May 6, at 9:30 a.m. at the Monomoy Middle School Gym. And I have a couple of slides here just for logistics and just new information. So we will have an electronic voting demonstration tonight. We have Craig Rowe, our IT Director, and we'll do it in person, but I just wanted to put on the screen what the devices look like. You all have them up here, as well as members of our audiences. So when there is, so checking in, each registered voter will get an electronic voting device, or clicker, as we call it, and also get a voting card. So just in case, worst-case scenario, we have to do votes with raising our cards, we'll have that as a backup. The actual articles that will be, that will use our electronic voting will be determined by the moderator. I know he's excited to use the voting devices. So in addition to tonight's demonstration, we'll also have a few questions at town meeting for people to get comfortable with the devices. So yes is a green or number one, and no is a red or number two. And when people have the devices in their hand, it's pretty easy to see that, how they vote. So we'll have a run-through with that at town meeting, but I just wanted to put this out there so everyone can see what they look like. And then when you leave, we'll have people put the, put the devices back into bins at the exit, so we can collect all of them. And they'll have a lanyard on them as well, that means a string that will be attached, so hopefully that's a good reminder for people to not, to not take them home. But if you do take them home, just return them back to the town offices or the police department and no arrest or anything. We just appreciate your participation. All right. Our next slide has some information about the town manager, the town moderator's intent to do a consent calendar, and that means it's a block of articles to put forward. And we've done this for a number of years, we haven't been inside doing this, I think, since 2018. So the moderator, after Article 2 in the warrant, will ask voters if they would be interested in a consent calendar that are typically articles that are routine, non-controversial, and are reasonably expected to pass unanimously. And that's the key to this, that it's an unanimous vote on the consent calendar. So they'll be put forward in a block, and if there's a voter who wishes to discuss any article that's being put forward as this block, they can simply say "hold" or "remove," and that item, just one person can do it, that article will be removed from the block for further discussion and at the time that it's regularly ordered in the warrant. And then again, when the articles have been read for this block, the moderator will ask for unanimous vote on the articles remaining on the consent calendar, and once there's a vote and it's passed unanimously, that would be considered passed. So the next two slides will show, show the articles that are proposed for inclusion in the consent calendar, and I know the moderator had provided this information to the Chronicle as well, and we'll have similar slides at town meeting just to remind people so that they can take action if they want to remove them. So Articles 3, prior year's bills, 5, fixed salaries of elected officials, 6, the consolidated revolving funds, 9, wood waste reclamation facility enterprise fund, 13, the Monomoy Regional School District PEG Fund, Article 30, the George Ryder Connector easement acquisition, Article 35, other post-employment benefits liability trust fund, Article 39, opioid settlement funds, and Article 42, it's the first article for the community preservation administrative budget, that's also known as the CPA. Continuing on with CPA articles, we have 47, which are the reserves, 49 for the Marconi Lattice Towers Preservation and Restoration and Relocation, Article 50 is the Chatham, South Chatham Library, 51 Cemetery Headstones Restoration, 52 Railroad Museum, 54, Chatham-Marconi Maritime Center Archives, 55 are the Salt March Studies, Salt March Study, 56 is the Open Space Trail Guides, 57 is the Bike Ways Improvement George Ryder Road Article, and then the last article as part of the consent is Article 59, that's the Jackknife Harbor Beach. So again, if any voter wishes to take this off of the consent calendar, they'd have to simply, you know, raise their hand to be recognized and say that they want to hold for that, and that will be considered separately. Logistics on transportation and parking, and a lot of this information is included in the warrant, but if a person needs a ride to the town meeting, they can make a reservation by calling the COA, and that's the number provided on the screen. So transportation is available through the Council on Aging and reservations. And then at the site itself, there will be a drop-off area in front of the school, which will be available for those with mobility challenges, and we certainly encourage carpooling. The primary park will be located at the middle school, and the volunteers, including CERT volunteers, will be on hand to ensure that parking is as efficient as possible to accommodate as many vehicles as possible. And then secondary parking is available in the lot off of Stepping Stones, which is a short, short walk to the back entrance of the school. And then additional parking is available at the Public Works Facility at 221 Crowe Road. We'll have pedestrian access to actually walk through the Old Colony Trail, and a shuttle via golf carts will be available for those that are in need of assistance. And I've asked town staff who are planning to attend town meeting to park at Crowe Road and also carpool, so to save as many spaces as possible for the public. And then childcare is available. We had this in the Post of Born as well, for ages three and up, and by reservation by contacting Susan Maubel. And drop-off is going to begin at 9 a.m., and that will take place in the middle school library. And then miscellaneous, but just as important, check-in will begin at 8:30 in the morning, so we encourage people to arrive early, just in case you need some more time checking in because of the electronic voting devices, but it shouldn't delay anything. And if that, bring water and a light snack, not sure what time will be done, but hopefully you can nibble on the way and not have to miss anything. And then also important is for voters to continue to vote at the annual town election, and that is Thursday, May 11. That's at the community center, and polls open from 9, from 7 a.m. to 8 p.m. So again, just some tidbits, and as we get through some of the items on the agenda, we'll do electronic voting presentation and display with Craig, our IT Director.
Mr. Shell?
Yeah, excuse me. With respect to the election on May 11, is it possible to vote early or absentee, or whatever we call it, but ahead of May 11? Do you know?
Yes, so, but it's handled as if we would handle the absentee ballots. So it's not actually walk-in and voting like we do for the national election. So yes, and contact the town clerk's office. I don't have the date in front of me, went to request the absentee ballot, but I believe it's, it's May 9th or 10th, but I can get that information out.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Jill? Good job, Jill.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Looks like it's going to be interesting to be back in, inside, and then with electronic voting, it's going to be a historic town meeting. Okay. Next item, any other public announcements and/or agenda item requests by anybody here present in or online? Elaine, I believe that's U-E-G-B. Elaine's hands up. Elaine? Ms. Gibbs?
Yes, thank you. This is actually just an agenda request reminder. It was regarding the toppled poll on March 3, and at that time, Mr. Shell and Mr. Dykens asked that some senior people from Eversource and Verizon appear before the select board. I do know that in the interim, there was some kind of meeting with town staff and some representatives, I don't know who, but I would ask that they do come to the meeting publicly and talk to the board so that we can find out, you know, what they've, what they've done and what they plan to do and what the timeframe is, because I think the public would have some questions and would like to hear directly from them what their plan is. And so, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Lynn. They're coming in, I believe they're coming in the 16th, Jill?
Yes, May 16.
So we're going to get some, hopefully some high mucky-mucks here that listen to us on the 16th. So onward and upward.
Excellent.
Yep, thanks for the reminder. Thank you. Okay. Any other public announcements? Andrew, Mr. Shell, your hands up again. Mr. Shell?
Is there any requests?
Yes.
Okay. So this comes to me from the Friends of Council on Aging Board, and the request is contingent on approval of the, the agenda item at, at town meeting and at the election for building a new center for active living at 1610 Main Street. Contingent on that approval, they would like a date with us, and they identified the 16th or the 23rd of May as possibilities, if we can do it. The purpose of the request, excuse me, is they are organizing and planning a capital campaign to fund various items associated with the project. They're asking to meet with us, basically to, in their words, open up a dialogue regarding potential application of those funds. Their early thoughts are FFNE, furniture fixtures and equipment, technology enhancements, landscaping, programming, and any other items that might encourage greater community use of the center. And they would like to basically establish a collaborative dialogue with us to promote optimization of the center for senior and community use. So that's the purpose. It's a very substantial target for their, their fundraising, and hopefully they'll be able to be very successful with that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shell. So noted for the future agendas. Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Shell. So noted for the future agendas. Okay. All right. Any other agenda items and/or announcements? I see none here. I see none online, so we'll move on. Our first item of business, post-public announcements and agenda item requests, is a public hearing, a utility hearing for a new handhole Fox Hill Road. It's an Eversource petition, and I'll call on our esteemed clerk to read the public hearing notice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The select board, Chatham Select Board, will hold a public hearing at 5:30 p.m. on Tuesday, May 2, 2023, to consider a petition from N-Star Electric Company, doing business as Eversource Energy, to install one handhole, eight slash HA67 and 108, I guess that's foot plus or minus, feet plus or minus of one-quarter inch conduit to a customer-installed handhole, eight HB67, to provide new underground service to the customer at 848 Fox Hill Road. The public is welcome to attend the meeting in person or participate via a link in the meeting's posted agenda. All interested parties are encouraged to participate. Sign the select board.
Okay, Mr. Shell. Thank you. I believe we have a representative from Eversource online. Is there someone from Eversource here that might give us a summary description of what you're asking for here, so we're plugged in a little bit?
Yes. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Speak up just a little louder, please. Yeah?
Okay.
Jessica, hi, Jessica. How are you?
Hi, how are you?
Good.
How you doing this evening? Thank you for having me, members of the board, Mr. Chair. I'm actually filling in for Marissa Jackson, who was a little bit double-booked tonight with another town. So I'm covering, covering for her. And again, thank you for having me this evening. And the company also thanks you for the relationship and communication while providing service to the town of Chatham. I'll just reiterate basically what was just announced. Eversource is petitioning with the request to install approximately 108 feet of conduit and cable under the town road on Fox Hill Road. We'll be going in right on the side of the road and one handhole as well. We will be starting at the proposed handhole, coming off of an existing pole labeled Eight Over 67, and following alongside the road above, as I said, 100 feet to the customer-installed handhold on, handhole on the property of 848 Fox Hill Road. This work is to provide underground service to the corn property at 848. There will be a detail, if necessary, as Eversource's main concern is, of course, for safety of the community and also for the workers, to get the job done safely and efficiently. Work should take approximately one to three days. That's just weather or any emergency comes up. It's probably a day, a day job. It will begin in one to 10 days after approval.
Okay, Jessica. Thank you for that summary. Any questions for Jessica? Mr. Nacastro?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to point out that the forms that were submitted for the orders and certificates are dated 2022, so that would have to be updated.
Oh, good eye.
Thank you.
Jessica, did you hear that?
So the, was it the petition that was, that was dated 2022, you said?
The signature places both certifications on the order, form of order, the certificate, the selectman's signatures. Those are all dated 2022. So when you insert the, the date of the vote, that just should be updated to 2023.
You've got a great, great catch. Thank you.
That can be done by hand.
You can note that by hand, and then?
I believe so, yeah. Okay.
Sean, I caught that anyway. Okay, Mr. Nacastro. Good catch. Jessica, I just have one question. Basically, this is your lane conduit to provide electrical service to 848 Fox Hill Road. Is that a fair statement?
That is correct.
Okay. Mr. Nacastro?
I had one other question. So is it, is the conduit a quarter of an inch, or is it one to four inches? I didn't know how to read that. Mr. Shell, read it.
It's one four-inch.
One quarter of an inch?
One four-inch conduit.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, one four-inch conduit. Okay. Anybody, this is, this is a public hearing, I'm reminded, which I need to be on occasion. Anybody from the public that would like to speak to this issue? Anybody online? Anybody here in person? I see no one. Back to the board.
Move approval.
Thank you, Mr. Nacastro.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Davis, and we'll take a vote. Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. Next item is a very important, we do this in the first meeting of the month, the drinking water testing and pumping update by our Public Works Director, Rob, our new Public Works Director, Rob Failey. Certainly becoming not new, Rob, you're under fire all the time, so welcome. And would you please give us an update on where we are with respect to our water levels and utilization?
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chair and Select Board members. So I'll provide a brief update on the drinking water projects and pumping report for Chatham. So as far as training field wells, five and eight, the temporary treatment at well five, the system will be backwashed, and the PFAS samples will be taken this week. Hopefully, with the return of clean samples, we will get the temporary vessel containing the activated carbon back, put back online for the summer season. The status of the permanent treatment facility, so that's for wells five and eight, Mass DEP gave us their approval to construct the facility, which was received on March 29th. It was just, missed the cutoff for last month's meeting. The SRF construction loan application was submitted on April 25th, and pending funding approval at the annual town meeting, we will begin the pre-qualification process with contractors. Regarding wells 10 and 11, the pumping, pumping and treatment construction, contractor Robert Hour, company completed installation of the roof system. Shingles are still in progress. Brick veneer work is in progress. I think it's slated to be finished this week. He's really making great progress on that. And regarding the pumping water comparison report, shows that we were 4.1% higher than last April. We actually finished the month at about 7.7% higher, or about one and a half million gallons more than last April. The wells are running five to six hours per day, which is up slightly over the beginning of the month, but certainly not taxing them too much yet. And we're not really having any other issues at this point. So that's about all I have to report unless you have any questions.
Okay, Mr. Failey. Any questions for Mr. Failey? I do have a comment. I believe that wells 10 and 11 are going to be very well housed. That's, that's a beautiful building. Thank you, Mr. Failey. Mr. Nacastro has a question, I think.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Rob, to what do you attribute, if you can, the increase in the pumpage for the month versus last year?
It's, it's really hard to put a finger on it. Of course, last year, we were under conservation restrictions. So with those lifted, that could attribute some of that to that. It's, it's really hard to pin it down on any one specific item.
Okay. It's not extraordinary. So, you know, we just have to continue to monitor usage. And I'm not in any way, shape, or form suggesting removing, reinstituting the restrictions, but I just, I think we should just keep our eye on it. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Failey? Well, thank you, Rob. Keep up the good work.
Okay, thank you.
Keep up, get those water levels up, Rob. Good job. We had great rain this week all the weekend. It can only help. Okay. So we have, we have our public comments on business agenda. We have a business agenda forthcoming. We have three people here that I think are available to answer two questions, if we have any, on our business agenda. So I'm going to hold off on asking them for comments until we get there. I think it will be fairly brief, or it won't be short-lived getting there. And then, our first item on our business agenda is we're going to test our electronic voting devices. We have a little demonstration, which we're excited about. Then we do have a request for sales on town property. I see Jessica Rogers is here. We have a request for town landing special use permit by Mr. Andrew Buckley for the Stage Harbor complex. We have the affirmation of the Bike Ways Committee recommendation on updating and naming Arm Road Designated Trail the Scenic Bike Loop. We have a private road easement for public water sewer drainage facilities on Honeysuckle Lane, Atwood Lane, and Cedar Swamp Lane. Dr. Duncanson will speak to that. Then we have an appointment to the Cape Light Compact, replacing former Select Board member Peter Kokolos. Then we have my report on the town manager's evaluation for calendar year '22, fiscal year '23. And then we have a review of the town manager's report for March 2023. So we'll get on with the business agenda if there aren't any other comments in, out there in the, in the virtual land on what we have forthcoming in our business agenda. Okay. So I'll turn, I have a hand up? Okay, Elaine. Yes, Elaine, speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to comment on Item 6D, which is the recommended bike way path.
Yeah.
I take Pond Street multiple times a day. This current bike path has people going down Queen Anne Road and then veering to the right along Pond Street. Pond is really narrow, and it has granite curbs that are 90 degrees, and there's no shoulder on that road. I've seen bikers, sometimes they ride to a breast, and they have hit the curb with their pedals. I think it's very dangerous. Sometimes families are going down there. That road is used by landscapers and construction vehicles and Eversource to avoid the downtown rotary. And it's, it's heavily traveled for all those people that use Stage Harbor, Cedar, Bridge Street, and the entire southern part of town. So it's heavily traveled. I would ask that the bike path remain on Queen Anne Road instead of going down Pond Street. And then, once they get to the rotary, they can take immediate right onto Stage Harbor Road. Because I think Pond Street is very dangerous, particularly for summer people who are not familiar with the area, and they've got families on bikes. I've seen it numerous times. It's a highly congested road to avoid the downtown rotary. So that would be my recommendation. I think it'd be far safer for families and the bikers and the drivers. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Gibbs. We'll bring it up. Okay. Any other comments on the business agenda forthcoming? Okay, we're going to go on to our first agenda item, which is our annual town meeting electronic voting demonstration. Mr. Craig Rowe is going to lead us through this. Green is good, red is bad, Craig.
Green is good, red is bad.
Gotcha.
And for anyone who's visually impaired, A1 is green and B2 is red.
Two B.
Yep. So, sorry, two B.
One A.
That's correct.
Excuse me. One A, two B.
I just wanted to go over the voting system. There was a couple of questions that come up about security. As you'll see on the screen here, this is the Wi-Fi connection here. This computer that will be used for voting is not on the internet. There is no outside connections whatsoever. It's direct connection between a routers, two routers that we'll have in place. So at any point in time, this will not be connected to the outside world. So everything is internal for integrity, making sure, just to clarify that point right off the bat. As you'll see, the, I've handed out, for people not here in person, I've handed out the small clickers to, to the people in the audience here. I've distributed 11 of them. You'll see on the clicker, there's a green, red, and a yellow button. We're not using the yellow button. That's an abstain from vote. So if you wish to not vote, just don't click anything on your clicker. The way the voting system's going to go is someone will be controlling the votes here, and we're just going to start off with a quick vote. Where are we here? Sorry, here. One through 25. Okay. This tells us how many participants we have in the meeting. So on, when we distribute the clickers out, it will be completely anonymous. So none, none of the clickers will be tracked as to who has what clicker. They'll be randomly distributed out. The moderator will get a count at the end of distribution when town meeting starts as to how many clickers have been distributed out. So we're going to open the vote here. And if anybody wants to vote on the question, will the Bruins win the Stanley Cup? I think this is a pretty convincing no. But anyone like to vote? As you see, what's happening is it's totaling up the votes of people who've decided to vote throughout the, through this process. So currently, there's 10 votes, and there'll be 11 now, sorry, 10. 10 total, because I only put in 10. So once this is done, the moderator's going to have a number on the screen as to how many people have voted. And he'll be able to say, you know, get a rough count. After discussion with the moderator, what he's going to do, once he gets close to that number, he's going to say, okay, we're going to close voting in, you know, 20 seconds or 30 seconds. Get your votes in. And then, however it comes out, however many people have voted, it'll be reflected up. Now, this one here is, as you'll see in the top here, is a majority vote. This raw absolute is just how many clickers, and, and it really doesn't mean much. And it's in progress. I'm going to stop the vote and close the vote. And we had, for this one, we had two people think that the Bruins are going to win, and eight people think that they're not going to win. So pretty straightforward. This is exactly what's going to be displayed at the town meeting. You're going to see that it failed. So this was a simple majority. We'll go into the next one here. We'll do the same thing again here. This one here is a two-thirds majority. So if you guys would like to click on that, will the Celtics win the NBA championships? This is a two-thirds vote. So 11 people have voted. And I'm going to close the vote. 12 people voted in total. And it's a nine to three. This one passes because it's a two-thirds majority vote. We got this one here. This one here is a four-fifth vote. So we're going to open this one up again. Pretty simple question, do people like to dance? If you guys would like to vote on that. Okay. I see that 11 clickers are distributed. Maybe someone didn't vote. Oh, 12. Everybody voted. We'll close the vote. And this one comes out to a seven in the no and five in the positive. It's failed. So the system does everything in the background. The way that the four-fifths is set up is 80% of the vote. So once 80% of the vote is in the affirmative, it's going to pass. If not, it's going to fail. You'll see on the screen, we're, we're going to provide, at town meeting, there'll be a separate screen for the voting, which will be to the looker's left-hand side of the moderator, which will be on his right, looker's left, it's a ski term, sorry about that. But looker's left side, there'll be a screen there. We're also going to display the motions on the large standard screen that we do on the looker's right-hand side of town meeting, which we always have, that we put up presentations, projections. So it'll display up like this. At the end of the day, the town clerk, for the, for the, for the motions that we vote on electronically, the town clerk will be able to print out a nice graph and show how many people voted, et cetera. So, yep.
Craig, so just so you know, so where the question is, do you like to go dancing? On the screen, the motion will be, it's, it will be loaded so that people can look up at the top where it says number three, do you like to go dancing? Instead, it would see, I motion to approve prior year bills. That's what the voters will see.
I just popped this one up here, this test article. It'll be to amend the existing protective zoning map. So we'll get as much information as we can in, on the screen, so people will be able to see that as well.
Mr. Shell, I've got a question.
I recall from the consideration of whom to, to let this contract to in the first place, that Meridia had a capacity to put up on the screen the, the clicker numbers with the vote that was registered to that on any given resolution, which would give, for me, I'm 15, I can see that I voted, and yes, it's reflected up there. Do you have the ability to demonstrate that here?
I can demonstrate it. We won't be using it at town meeting because of the large numbers of clickers that we're going to have. You know, we're projecting, we're going to have 1,300 clickers if we have a large number of participants that come to the meeting. It would be really hard to even see up on the screen exactly, you know, who's voted with those types of numbers. If we had something like a 40 or 50 vote, where we, you know, we were doing something with 40 or 50. So I'm So I'm hesitant to show you, to you, just because we're not gonna use it for the meeting, so it's a little bit.
Got it. The, the capacity to do that is some assurance that, you know, this thing works the way it's supposed to. So thank you.
Yep. Ms. Davis.
Craig, can you change your vote? I noticed I couldn't.
Yep, so while the vote is open.
I asked if it could change your vote.
Yep, while the vote is open, you can change it anytime that you like. And actually, I'll just go over it quickly. On the clickers, you'll see, once you vote, it gives you a little, it says what number you chose on the clicker. Now, I just voted yes, so I got a number one, but I've decided that I'm gonna change it. So I'm gonna hit two and it's gonna show two okay on the screen. So yes, you can change your vote at any point in time while it is open. As soon as it closes, you can't change your vote. And just to get back to the question on the, you know, the participant grid, we, you know, as I say, there's 1,300 clickers, it'll be a tiny little screen. So, you know, I think it's, it was, I think it's a really great idea and it's really good in certain, certain areas and certain times, so.
Mr. DeCastro.
Yeah, Craig, what happens if we have people come in late to the meeting and they pick up a clicker? Does, does that get added into the total tally that the moderator knows is present?
Yep, that'll be correct. Yeah, I'm sure the town clerk will probably just notify someone, because I can imagine check-in's gonna take time. So if by 9:30 and the meeting starts and we have, let's say, another 50 people come in, we'll hopefully relay on to the moderator how many clickers are out in play and, yeah, so he should know.
People could come as late as an hour or two, just to attend a particular.
They could come right before a specific article and they'll be able to sign in. So long as they're a registered voter in town, they'll be able to accept a clicker and they'll be able to come in and vote.
The other question I have is, in terms of what the majority is or the requisite threshold for passage, will the numerical statement of that be recited on the, on the screen? If, if it just says two-thirds majority required, people are gonna wanna know what's two-thirds. I mean, they can, they can do it on their calculator, but will the number be posted?
It, it won't show it, no. Doesn't, it doesn't reflect it. It's going to reflect in the fact that this one here is a majority vote. So if there's more yeses than nos, it's gonna be reflected. But I understand the question there with two-thirds is.
Will it say passed or?
It'll say passed, yep. So let me just close this one out. So I'll close this vote out. And this is just a regular majority. So six to four for this vote. So it's a majority, so it passes.
Okay.
We can do another two-thirds here.
Yep.
We'll do another, what do I got here queued up? Two-thirds. Two-thirds majority here. Okay, up and up. Do you like sushi? People can vote on this one.
And if you want, if you wanna change your vote, just to see what it looks like on your, your pad too.
On your pad. Okay, so now that's completed, closed vote. And because this is a majority, two-thirds rule, which is in the top up here, it fails.
So the, the transcript of the, of the town meeting or the official record wouldn't, will not show the actual number? Or will that show from, for, will the town clerk report?
The town clerk will have a copy of that, that exact number, yes.
Is that number available immediately?
Uh, it, it is available immediately. We export it. Once all the motions have been heard, we're going to export it and the export will have how many people voted in specific.
Well, what, what I'm asking specifically is, you have a particular vote that requires a two-thirds majority, or in one case, it's a four-fifth majority. And the vote is taken and it passes or is defeated.
Mm-hmm.
Will the voter is then and there, after that motion is, is closed out and determined, be able to know how many voted for it and how many, can that be?
They'll be able to see on this screen here, but I, they're not going to be able to see. It, it's gonna show just like this. We're gonna display this until the moderator says he's moving on.
So they'll take it from what's, from the right column?
Yep. But I understand your question there. When we get into 1,300 votes, people are gonna be like, well, they're gonna have to calculate out, let's say 1,300 people vote on a two-thirds majority, they're gonna have to do a quick calculation and they can say.
Well, it will say passed or defeated up at the top.
That is correct, yep.
Passed or failed, I guess.
Yep.
And they'll see the numbers on the right. And those are the numbers that determine whether it passed or failed.
Yep, yep. But it's not gonna say you needed, you know, eleven or seven votes for it to pass, et cetera.
I had a conversation with Jill last week and I guess at one of your sessions with the staff, you did actually test whether this was correct, these numbers were correct or not. You asked people who voted to raise their hands?
Yep, they did a hand vote, yeah. A hand, just a raise hand vote and decided to, yeah. And it came out accurate. It was actually, it was a little bit weird. I was not there and Jill may be able to explain a little bit better.
Yeah, it was, one person with their clicker had clicked three A abstain for three votes in a row and we were concerned, maybe someone's clicker wasn't working properly. So we asked for a hand coat, hand count and that person then said, oh, I just pressed abstain, so I'll vote to test my thing. So it worked.
Would I be too bold to request that we try that tonight for the benefit of the public? We're not gonna do it on Saturday because we have.
Sure.
Multiple, many, many people present.
Do you wanna do, let's do it on this one? If you remember, you vote or you wanna do it.
Does everyone? I can queue up another question.
Let's do a fresh one and people.
I do, I do a follow-up. Is, is the abstain button live or is it not live?
It is not live.
Okay. All right. So at town meeting, even if you press three C, it's not gonna, it's not gonna matter? Okay, good.
And it's not going to show up as a total count either. I hit abstain on a couple of them and it just kept at 11 when we actually have 12 devices. So it will not record anything.
I, I have one further follow-up, Craig. The size of the screen, is it going to be similar to what we're seeing here now in terms of yes, nos? Or is it gonna be larger?
Um, it'll be, I think we requested and Mark may be able to, I think it's about a 70-inch monitor, which will be right. We're, we're trying to work on logistically positioning and Mark's just giving me the thumbs up. We're going to try and position it logistically as, as close as possible to the moderator as well.
Okay, Mr. Metters and then Mr. Shell.
So just for clarity, in past town meetings, we usually have a voice vote. People question that we have the tickets go up. So we're gonna get tickets this year. But with this system at play this year, this vote is the, it trumps, there's no need for a ticket vote. I guess the tickets are only, for some reason, this clearly is failing, for some reason, it's kind of a backup plan.
Correct.
The tickets are not, there's no expectation that tickets, assuming the system is working, there's no need for tickets procedurally.
The moderator has, well, actually Jill, if you wanna address that?
Yeah, so the, the intention is, so we have 1,300 clickers. If for some reason, we get 1,500 people at town meeting, then we might have to do a counted vote, just so everybody has that equal access. But the intent, there still might be some voice votes because it's pretty quick, but the intention is to use the clickers.
Great, thank you.
And Mr. Shell.
Yeah, I, I got a little confused between the questions that Dean was asking and the answers you were giving. Just to be absolutely clear, the one thing, when it's done, that will be displayed is the yeses and the nos and the total.
That is correct and the result up above.
And the result up above. But I, but in terms of the numbers, you will be able to see what the number of yeses were and was and what the number of nos was and the total.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Where previously, the moderator just had that on a cheat sheet. So, you know, this is actually a little bit more transparent in a way as the fact that here it is, here's 11. So let's do this vote here. We'll open this vote up and if people can remember what they chose for the vote. Okay, so we got 12 votes. I'll close this out. Okay, so basically, anyone who said no, raise their hand. One, two, three, four, five. That's exactly right. Yep.
Who said yes, you wanna do a yes distribution?
Yeah, anyone who said yes, two, four, seven. Perfect. I was a little worried there, my counting was a little off. Late day. Yeah, so the goal is, is that this will be the book of record for the voting and if the moderator deems that something else needs to be done, he will make the appropriate decision. And just to go over what Jill was mentioning, we have seating for, for as many people as we can in the main auditorium. We will have an overflow room. If we get to the point where we don't, where more than 1,300 people have arrived, we'll, we'll ask those members to go into the, it's called the Slim Gym, the other small gym in the, at the school. There will also be a live feed, so they'll be able to see, they'll, they'll be able to ask questions, et cetera. They'll also be able to comment on the question. They'll have to come into the main room to comment on the question, similar to what we do with the auditorium. If you'd like to speak on a motion, you have to come into the main gymnasium, then you can go back into the auditorium.
But the auditorium will also have one of these devices as well to see the vote?
The auditorium is going to display this screen, yes. We're gonna feed that in there. I believe we're gonna be able to feed it into the other room as well. But anyone that is voting in the Slim Gym, the other gymnasium, will have to be a card vote and that'll be kind of at 1,300. Once we get 1,300 people, there's just not enough clickers.
Yep, okay. Any other comments or questions? Does anybody want any more demonstrations? Are we good? Okay. Craig, thank you, that was great. Jill, thank you. And the committee, thank you, everybody.
I'll just do a quick collection of these clickers. And as per the, there will be a.
Lucky 11 here.
A drop box for these. As, we've set up three drop boxes for people if they, when they leave and we'd ask the public just to drop them into the box. We'll sort them out later on, but we don't wanna lose these.
Right, thank you, Craig.
If I could, I've actually been asked the question whether you can go out and come back. I just assumed in answering that, that you can't go out and, and keep the clicker with you. If that's not correct, it should be corrected here.
I had not heard that question. I had not heard that question, Michael. I would assume that you put the clicker down if you're gonna leave. You might, what if you don't come back and you keep the clickers?
No, that was the logic of my answer, but.
Come back, yeah.
So when speaking with the, with Meridia, they encourage people, if they're with somebody to hand them. We don't want people to vote for somebody else, obviously. So if a husband and wife, we don't want, hey, hold on to my clicker, I'm going to the bathroom, will you vote for me? Obviously, we can't stop that, but it, it would be the best if people do that. We're looking at possibly putting a table where you can drop your clicker, go to the restroom, et cetera, come back and pick it up. Now, if you don't pick up the exact same clicker, it doesn't matter. So if you and I went to the restroom, you came back, you picked up the wrong one, doesn't matter because it's still just a vote. But we'll clarify that before Friday.
There is a, listen again.
Well, I, I think attended to that and I, this is how, what I understood Mike was asking. Someone leaves, actually leaves the meeting, they've got an errand to run, they wanna come back and vote on a particular article. What do they do? They drop the clicker in the drop box and then come back?
Um, we weren't gonna put the drop boxes there, but yes, they could, they could just pick up the, the same clicker. I'll, I'll have to clarify that with Meridia to make sure. You know, if someone has to take a phone call and they disappear for a half hour and they're waiting on a specific thing, I don't really have a problem with them just having it on their person, so long as they come back. The key is to get them back at the end of the day. So we need to get back 1,300 clickers or 1,250, whatever we distribute.
Great. Okay, thank you, Craig. Thank you very much. Okay, and thanks for the patience of folks here. Our next item on the agenda is a request for sales on town property, outdoor sale of goods. Jessica Rogers, who's the Council on Aging Program and Communications Coordinator, has planned an intergenerational Spring Fling concert in Kate Gould Park. So Jess, you've, you've been patient and thank you for your, for your voting. It's one of the reasons why I wanted you to stay and comment during this rather than prior. So what are we up to, Jess?
Well, thank you for having me. My name is Jessica Rogers. I'm the Programs and Communications Coordinator for the Council on Aging. And this last fall, I submitted with the assistance of the Friends of the Council on Aging, a grant with the Chatham Cultural Fund, which would pay for a concert that would be an intergenerational event sponsored by this grant and hosted by the Council on Aging that would be free to all at Kate Gould Park, downtown Chatham, from 2:00 to 3:30. And I was hoping that we could have at least one food truck, maybe a couple of food trucks for the event. And my thought is that it would be the easiest options for those wish to purchase food while enjoying their free concert. In addition to the food trucks, this event could draw more people in having food trucks there and it could persuade attendees to stay for the entire performance instead of leaving for food. And any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Well, thank you, Jess. Thanks for staying. Any questions or comments? Ms. Davis.
Just logistically, Jessica, thank you for the presentation. I think it's a great idea. One of the things I'm thinking about is the, you're requesting this, the food trucks for 2:00 to 3:30. Parking and logistics, like are you, are you working with the, the police to block off part of Kate Gould parking lot? I mean, have, have you talked with the restaurant next door? All that stuff.
Right. No, this is, this is kind of a moving conversation, so I still have to double-check and check in with everybody to make sure.
So conceivably, if it's a 2:00 to 3:30 event, it would probably, you'd need the access to the parking lot from, hold on, access to the parking lot from something like 1:30 to 4:00 or something like that?
Yes.
Okay, all right, okay.
And just a brief question for Sean. We have food trucks down there during Oktoberfest, I believe, or at some other events right there at Kate Gould.
Yes, for Oktoberfest specifically.
Yeah, I would, I would use that template as, as a way to go with the Kate, with the Kate Gould.
And just one more question, if you don't mind. So how are you vending or, or finding the food trucks? You just soliciting and yourself?
Correct, yes. I reached out to a couple and they were available and excited at the opportunity of its past.
Oh, great. That's really exciting. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Mr. DeCastro.
Yeah, thank you. Jessica, I just wanna inquire as to what I think is the obvious. This is, your memo to the board indicates that the entertainment will be provided by a group called Stage Door, Stage Door Canteen, which is a 14-piece band from Falmouth. Is that being noticed, noticed in the flash? I think I saw it in the flash.
It will be, yes. It's also in our newsletter as well.
So people know what, will know what, what's entailed in this, what's in store for them. Okay, thank you. I move approval, Mr. Chairman. I bet, I guess I should read the motion.
Okay.
I move to approve sales on town property and the outdoors display of goods associated with the inclusion of two food trucks vending at the Chatham Bars Avenue parking lot on Saturday, May 20th, 2023, from 2:00 PM to 3:30 PM in conjunction with the intergenerational Spring Fling concert hosted by the Council on Aging.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any further comment? Seeing none, Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. DeCastro?
Aye.
And Mr. DeCastro, the chair says aye as well. Good luck, Jessica, have fun.
Thank you.
This is success. Next item on our agenda is a request for town landing special use permit, launch service for the Stage Harbor complex to shuttle boaters from various town landings to and from their moorings. moorings, and it's by Mr. Andrew Buckley, who's here this evening. Mr. Buckley, why don't you welcome and come forward? And there was a good memo, but why don't you describe what you're, what you're up to?
It's an experiment.
Okay.
I grew up on the Oyster Pond, and my first job, aside from working for my father pushing the lawnmower in the cemeteries, was working for Steve Turner diving for conchs in the Oyster River. I'm now looking to have a launch service that specifically serves Oyster River, Oyster Pond, Stage Harbor, Mill Pond, Mitchell River, focused not on a water taxi service or charter boat or anything like that. I'm looking to primarily focus on getting people to their moorings. All the town landings are very crowded with dinghies, and if there were another way for people to get to their boats, that would be a great service, especially as people are getting older, including myself, to be able to row out to a dinghy with any number of things that you're bringing out to the boat, so you can go out clamming, bringing people to the beach or whatever. So, I'm focused on that. Now, we're looking at a five-mile route from the Furlong to Mill Pond Dinghy Dock, and so I'm looking for some flexibility. I don't really know what the demand is going to be, but this is one of those, if you build it, maybe they'll come, situations. So, I'm looking to be able to do that. It's about an hour if you don't make any stops at five miles an hour, since it's all in a wake zone, except for the Oyster Pond. And so, to be able to do that, it's probably going to one hour, hour and a half perhaps, there and back again. Just yesterday, I picked up a 18-and-a-half-foot maritime skiff originally from the Little Compton Police Department, and it had been rehabbed by a fiberglass expert in Connecticut, and it's in the yard now, and we're going to get it ready to go. Hopefully, tomorrow, I've been told by Eldridge and Lumpkin, I might have a quote for insurance. I've spent two months trying to get an insurance quote for this to meet the conditions of the permit. And other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Ms. Davis?
I'll kick it off. Andrew, I think this is a great idea. I mean, we need a lot, I mean, it's a much-needed service for this complex. There's a lot of boats in the harbor, a lot, as you said, a lot of dinghies and things like that. So, a couple of questions. Does this require a six-pack, or what kind of license does this require?
Actually, it does. The Coast Guard requires it, as long as you're taking money to bring people or receiving anything of value, you need a six-pack. I've had my master's license, I actually originally got it in 2005. That's the one step up from the six-pack, and I had it renewed last year.
Oh, great, great. Because I couldn't really see the certificate or the license, it was a little blurry, so I wasn't sure whether it was recent or not.
Sure.
And of course, all the safety equipment on the boat and PFDs and all that stuff.
The Coast Guard will jump on me like a ton of bricks, but yeah, I've already been in touch with them, and in fact, round and round, finally, Coast Guard told me that they'll do a courtesy inspection. So, again, I'm going to meet all of their requirements.
Just a question of how are you going to promote this? What's your, what's your plan?
Twenty-four years ago, I bought the domain stageharbor.com, and I'm going to put that to use, especially as a mobile app, because it's one thing if you're coming in to Stage Harbor on your boat and you're visiting, and you're used to hailing the Harbor Master and seeing who the launch service is. But if you're going down to the dock, going down to the Furlong or Sears Road or something, you're just going to have your cellphone. And the one thing is, that I know very well from having a daughter, is Google Maps allows you to track people. So, I'm going to make my, my position available during the hours that I'm operating. People will be able to make requests, I'll say similar to Uber or Lyft, but I'm also, I was just speaking with probably the first potential customer for a season pass. A few towns do that, they, they just unlimited rides within the entire season, that way you don't have to carry the money with you every single time, just pay for it the way that a lot of people are used to with ride sharing, just to be able to, or, you know, if you suddenly realize you need to go down there, call, text, whatever, I've got a dedicated Google Voice number for this. So, there are many different ways to be able to do that. What really is going to be difficult for me is a logistical challenge, because we're talking not a full loop. So, I'll be going back and forth and just trying to be able to say, well, if I'm in Mill Pond right now and someone's on the Furlong, I'm going to have to wait.
Are you going to have signage on the boat, or are you naming the boat a particular?
Well, I have to name the boat after my mother.
All right. I think Lucy would love that.
Lucy Jane. But, but yeah, I'm going to be putting some lettering on it, and, you know, we already have a Facebook page and an Instagram page, and, you know, you saw the photos there, they've already been posted to social media. So, really, and in fact, you know, a number of people have said they'd be happy to put up flyers, you know, anywhere as well. So, I mean, there's, there's multiple ways to be able to do this.
Yeah, there's always the poster bulletins around the landings, too. I just have a comment, if you don't mind. I, you know, I've been in Stage Harbor all my life and worked in, out of there, and we've had property down on the dock, had the dock there for a while. And I've watched the lack of services that Stage Harbor has, has lost since like the 1970s and 80s. You know, we, we had a, we had, we have the marina that does a great job for their customers and whatnot, and, and some of the other services that are around there, but next to the trap dock was another marina that was quite active in, in servicing and customers and that. And when the town bought it, that was lost. So, we seem to be inundated with dinghies everywhere because people are trying to get to their boats, but I've seen people swim from their moorings to, to get back to, to the landings and whatnot. And that's not a bad thing in the, you know, if you've got a mooring that's close, but I think it's a really great idea, and I, I'm really going to support it, and I wish you really well with your endeavor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Mr. Castro?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for, Andrew, for submitting the photographs and, and the map. I just had one question regarding Mill Pond, does that extend into Little Mill Pond as well?
I'm looking to bring it right up to the dinghy dock, so theoretically, if, if someone were to arrive on a 56-foot sailboat and have a transient mooring and they want to get in, rather than being in a little Zodiac or something like that, I could drop them right on the Mill Pond and they could go into town.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much. I think I agree with what Shereen just said, and she has more background on this than I do, obviously, but it sounds like a great idea, I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other further comment? I'm supportive as well, Andrew, I wish you well. How many folks do you think, how many riders are you going to take on the boat, do you think?
Well, I'm limited to six, and, and the boat is maximum capacity, capacity of five, of eight. So, therefore, it's me, six passengers, and a helper if it, if need be. As far as how many I can get done, again, this is an experiment. I don't even know, I'm projecting that I'm going to meet my expenses, but beyond that, I have no idea. Again, you know, if, if, I can only imagine, you know, if someone wants me to pick them up at the Furlong but drop them in somewhere down the river, that's a different story, but I really don't know where the demand is. The interesting thing is that people could go to one town landing that is not necessarily closest to their mooring and get picked up, because they can get a parking space there. How many times have people gone down to, you know, any town landing, and they're all ready, they've got the car packed up, and everybody's ready to go, and there's no place to park? It'd be nice to have a second option, to be able to go somewhere, to be able to access your mooring.
Right, so you're looking for a special, special use permit for our town landings? And I just want to make one comment, the community development department and the Harbor Master have approved the applications, I just want to make that known. Mr. Shell?
Just a question, is this strictly getting people to their moorings, or if I'm at Sears Landing and I'd like to go downtown via the water, is that something that you would accommodate or could accommodate?
Do you have a mooring?
No.
I think, I'm going to try to avoid, I think the demand really would be more people wanting to go from Barn Hill to Morris Island. And I'm going to try to avoid that, because logistically, it's going to start creating a real problem, because then I would, I would find most of the demand would be people wanting to take it to the beach and be a water taxi, and I really kind of want to stay in my lane.
Yep.
Now, if someone, but, but if someone comes in with a transient mooring and wants it to be brought down to town or something like that, if someone wants a, a ride around, I don't know, maybe, that's why I named it after my mom, because she loved taking a ride back and forth to the Mill Pond and back and back.
We still do have those transient moorings just inside the cut, right? Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah.
We have, town has several available moorings in town and a lot of transient, so, you know, oftentimes people will pick up a mooring and they, they have no vehicle, they don't have no, they don't have anything, and they're, they're there, so, yeah.
I'm certainly supportive, I thought was prescient to get stageharbor.com as a domain name years ago, that was, that was prescient, that was good. Okay, any further comment from, okay, so, let's take a vote, motion please. Move approval. Okay?
Second.
Thank you, okay. Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Castro?
Aye.
And the chair, Mr. Dyken says aye as well. Good luck, Andrew.
Great, thank you very much.
Good luck. Okay, the next item is a firm Bike Waste Committee recommendation, an update on naming on-road designated trail, the Scenic Bike Loop. Mr. Failey is listed here as a speaker, why don't we hear from, is he still here or is he not?
He is, and we also have...
I am still here.
Hi, Mr. Failey, how are you, sir?
Mr. Chair, we also have Bob Noonan from the Bike Waste Committee.
Mr. Newman, okay. Newman, did you say?
Noonan.
Noonan, okay, hi, Bob.
Bob, would you like me to go?
Go ahead, Mr. Noonan, just to hear what you have to say from the Bike Waste Committee's perspective.
Sure, this was a resolution we passed at our recent meeting, and we're simply changing the name of the on-road route, which used to be called the scenic route, now we're calling it a loop. Somewhat technical, we're not actually, as previous speakers suggested, changing the routes itself, all the routes are signed right now, though we are looking at improving the signage, but that's apart from this, we just, we just wanted to, the loop for a couple of reasons. First of all, it is a loop, and, and the new map that we just had printed is a very clean, clear loop. It used to be a more complicated loop that took, took people down to North Chatham and around, and we've actually eliminated that for safety and considerations, because people seem to get lost out there, and just made it a simple loop. That simple loop has always been there. Now, we are concerned about riding on-the-road issues and constantly have discussions about that, and that's another reason why the loop distinguishes it from the Old Colony Rail Trail, which is the true bike trail, which is off-road, and people, and we, that's marked very specifically, there are sections of the Old Colony Rail Trail which, with the, your support, we're improving upon, making them more specifically fully paved and fully approved bike trail. But there is, there's one section that still is, one or two sections are still on the road. So, loop distinguishes it from the trail, but we are not, I, I had to find out where Pond Road was.
Yes.
That is, that has been on the map all along. If there's some safety concerns about that, we'll certainly take a look at it. I'm not so sure what Old Queen Anne would do to that situation, but that's a separate issue, and we're clearly looking, and we're concerned about several other spots on the trail also, on the loop, if you approve that name. But we're not actually asking you to change the map, we're just, the map is something, if there is a change, we would go before the Safety Commission and talk about that. But this is the current approved situation. The, if somebody might have asked another question, on the map, we are actually showing Briar Cliff as part of it. Briar Cliff has always been designated as a way to get to the Fish Pier, coming right off of the road at Crowell, you can go straight up across, I've done that myself with bike groups and things of that nature, it's very direct and very safe, and it's currently marked, we're showing it on the map now. But again, we're not asking you to approve a map, we're asking you to approve a name.
So, you want formal approval of the name, is you looking for?
Well, we thought, if such is necessary, yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Noonan. Mr. Shell, and then?
Just a question, I'm very familiar with the route, and I'm sort of familiar with all the signs that direct you around the loop. Do the signs have to be changed?
We, I and Steve Wardell are the subcommittee that are looking at this, I've been looking at that issue for about a year and a half, and with this simpler map, we're going to look to simplify it. One of the things we're looking to do is to describe the route coming from Crowell, when it becomes, goes on the road, as basically a counterclockwise thing. And we're thinking of removing the signs that go the other way, they can be quite confusing. The other thing is, we are in discussion with the new director, we would ask that the signs that are on the North Chatham section actually be removed, and we think that's a safety issue and a simplicity issue. We're looking for a simple map. This is the kind of map that's used by people that are entering the town, coming off the Old Colony Rail Trail, maybe coming off of Cape Cod Rail Trail, they might have been riding 30, I used to ride in from Turo when we used to rent up there, it was a 50, 60-mile ride. How do you get to Chatham? This shows you the loop around Chatham, and, and I think that's the, the kind of person that uses the map and might appreciate the definition of loop.
Thank you.
Mr. Castro?
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Bob, I appreciate your clarifying what's before us tonight, which is essentially...
The name.
A name. And I, I did, we all heard the comment by Ms. Gibbs, so if she wanted to pursue that, she could, the remedy would be to come before the Bike Waste Committee.
We have several concerns. Riding on roads is always more difficult.
Yeah.
There are always, there's, you know, various issues that occur, and some people need to know these are roads, and therefore, if you have a family and they're not comfortable in riding on roads, you probably shouldn't take this route. But we're looking at some further issues, even defining certain sections being more difficult than others.
But that could be taken up at your committee if she wished to pursue it, and you would be, as you said, consulting with the Traffic Safety Committee, so, but you're, as you point out, you're constantly looking at these safety issues anyways. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further comment? Motion to accept the name change?
So moved.
Second.
And we had a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Castro?
Aye.
And Mr. Dyken says aye as well. Thank you, Ms. Noonan, thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is a private odeasement for public water sewer drainage facilities on Hinesuckle Lane, Atwood Lane, and Cedar Swamp Lane. Dr. Bob's been patient, I see him on, on the screen, welcome, Dr. Bob. Wrote a good memo, so anything else to add to the memo, please?
No, this is pretty straightforward. The board's seen these kind of memos and takings on private roads in the past for, for the sewer project. You know, a couple of years ago, we did change the easements to include water drainage and, they're primarily for the sewer project, but we did include water and drainage just because we found in some of the prior water main work, the easements weren't properly done, so we're just trying to clarify that and make sure the public understands that, you know, it covers any of those three infrastructures. But for these particular roads, we're only looking at sewer at this point.
Okay, any questions for Dr. Dunkinson? These are off Old Queen Anne, I mean, Stage Harbor, I mean, I'm sorry, Bob.
These are off Stage Harbor Road. We're in the process of citing a new wastewater pump station at, behind the Harbor Master's workshop on Old, at Old Mill Bow Yard, and that would, these would all tie into that system.
Historically, we have had a couple of issues with respect to these takings, so I just want to make sure that we've, we've got everything buttoned up on this one, that's all. So, it looks as though everything's up to snuff. We will file the order of taking when and how soon, and I remember we had issues with respect to, well, with Stage Harbor Road, frankly, and around the corner there as well in the past, so I just want to make sure that we've got it all buttoned up this time, and that...
Yeah, we will, we will be filing this order of taking likely next week, once I have the official signed form from you. We get the mylar's from the engineer, and then we'll have you, members of the Select Board, come into the office and quickly sign the mylar's, and then we'll get those down to the registry.
Mr.?
Ms. Davis, please.
I just want to order, just a matter of clarification, a property on this map is listed as one of my family members, but they had sold it in 2018, so they're no longer on it.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, Ms. Davis. Mr. Shell?
Just apropos your reference to the prior experience, are the property owners aware of this in any fashion, either formally or otherwise?
Most of these property owners are being notified of the project through Conservation because we have to file with Conservation, because we're within 100 feet of wetland areas for many of these roads, so they are, we're in that process right now, and the hearing before the Conservation Commission is actually next week, so the property owners have been sent, actually, they've been sent twice, because we ended up having to change the date for the Conservation hearing, so they have received notification that way, yes.
And, and have we had any reaction back?
No, none, none that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
But just, but not all property owners get notified? Just those that were in the conservation areas?
Yes, but for these particular roads, that's the majority of the property owners.
Okay. Well, again, my earlier comment, I just want to make sure we're all buttoned up, ready to go. Everybody's been informed, everybody's understanding what's going on. Any further comment? Waiting for Mr. DeCastro to come back, I think. Provo. So you're looking for a vote for the taking of the private road easements, right? Mr. Chairman?
Yes. And again, just says, you know, for clarity, as in prior sewer project, we're only taking the easement in the road layout.
Yep.
The easements do not go onto private property, if you will. So it's just the road layout that we take easements.
Thank you.
And that's just to put these, just to put the sewer infrastructure in.
Got it, we got it, Bob. Okay. Dina Castro had a question, he was asked just for a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bob, on the attachment which lists all the properties, the very first page, the second item says Nancy B. Chase. In the fourth column in, it says Plan Book 143, Page 63, Lot 2. Do you see that?
Yes.
Underneath it says easement four and maybe six. Is that just a notation that you might be taking two easements in two locations for that particular property?
Yes, that's in a, this list was developed by Town Council's office.
Okay.
So yes, that was just a notation that they put in there.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. All right, folks. Motion to accept private road easements.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Shell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the, may I suggest the motion be to take the private road easements-
Yeah.
As proposed-
Okay.
Rather than accept.
Okay. Would that change?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. DeCastro, and we'll vote. Mr. DeCastro?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Mr. Metters?
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. With the resignation of Mr. Peter Kokolas, who served this, as our representative to the Cape Light Compact for a number of years, and he became a fixture and very knowledgeable as a resource to this town. He has resigned, so we need to make another appointment to the Cape Light Compact. And we have had a recommendation to appoint Mr. Brian Minor as the town's representative and entertain a motion to that effect.
I will move that.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? This is Energy Action, Energy and Climate Action Committee has voted unanimously to recommend Brian be appointed, so I certainly take their recommendation to heart. So I would like a motion, please.
I think Mr. Shell wants to read the motion.
Okay.
Oh.
Recites the term.
Edgar Bergen and-
There you go.
Charlie McCarthy, I'm Charlie, right? I move to appoint Brian Minor as the town's representative to the Cape Light Compact until work is completed unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Second.
There we go. Okay. Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. DeCastro?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Brian, have fun, you'll do a great job. Okay. Next item is our town manager evaluation, calendar year '22, fiscal year '23. Every year, we have an annual evaluation of our esteemed town manager, Jill Goldsmith. As you, as most of us know, and I'll just elaborate a little bit, we rank Jill on a four-point ranking on six areas, personal, professional, development, board, support and relations, financial management, personnel management, organizational leadership, community leadership, public relations, and town operations and infrastructure. And then we are, we rank Jill according to each of those criteria with four points who are not observed. So when we amass all those scores, we score Jill out for each one of those areas and her composite score, I should say, totaled a stellar 3.74 out of a possible four. So it's a wonderful score and, you know, I'd be surprised to not see the kind of a score saying as how we just renewed your contract for another, for another four years. So congratulations, Jill, and really you had some wonderful comments. We were allowed to comment on your areas of performance as well. And I'm going to read just a few of them, not going to read them exhaustively, it's going to take too long, although you're deserved of it, but I'm going to summarize some of those comments, Jill. So for personal and professional, one of us wrote, "The town manager continues to carry out her job responsibilities as a consummate professional and holds the highest standards for dedication and integrity." Great comment. A couple more on personal and professional. My general evaluation is that Jill is extremely capable, dedicated, well-equipped for the job, and works very hard to achieve a high level of performance. It appears to me that she does that rather consistently, that she does rather consistently achieve that high level of performance. I thought that was a very nice comment, very great comment. Another one. Jill is a true professional. She is totally committed to delivering the most efficient, effective municipal services in Chatham as is possible and practical. And I thought that was a good comment as well. Board support and relations, and I think we've come a little ways with the board support and relations with Jill. We've had a, we had a great discussion during the course of your negotiating your contract. A couple of comments. Town manager communicates well to the members of the select board. I continue to encourage town manager to engage more in discussions of the agenda items during select board meetings. So a very constructive comment there, I thought. And that theme is, we have that theme elsewhere as well. The same, the same area, Jill has an excellent relationship with the select board. The resounding renewal of her contract is testimony to the quality of that relationship. And then another comment, in the same gist of the first one, "I'd like to hear more of Jill's opinions on matters we discuss in our select board meetings. Her institutional experience helps inform our decisions." I thought that was very, very apt as well. Financial management, and we are blessed in this town to have had Alex Halella as Jill's first lieutenant in finance for a long, long time, and we really do appreciate her contribution here. But through forward, through thorough and forward-thinking budgeting and reaffirmed AAA bond ratings say it all. Excellent financial management working with the finance director is among the town manager's best qualities. Another one. The management of the town's finances and related matters, treasury, debt, debt rating, budgets, reporting cash, et cetera, appear to me to be superior. The metrics to which one looks for assessing the town's financial position, health, and outlook are all uniformly excellent. Resounding support. Wonderful. Jill and the select board are fortunate indeed to have Alex Halella as our director of finance. That said, Jill handles the finances of Chatham masterfully. Personnel management, organizational leadership. I encourage the town manager, connect our new staff to select board members. Please clarify the roles and responsibilities to assist select board members' outreach to the public. I thought that was insightful, we'd like to get to know the staff as they're hired and Jill should take the leadership role with respect there, too. Reorganization of community services and recent new hiring and promotions, for example, director of community services, town planner, housing and sustainability director, a new Chatham Police Department Fire Chief, a new chief of the fire department promotions, have marked a very successful year on the personnel front in the face of serious recruiting challenges affecting Cape Towns. And we raised this issue last year with a challenge to Jill to flesh out our hiring and hire into these very important positions that, and she's done that, and she's done it well. And I also commented on the recent hiring of Rob Failey, who I think is doing a great job and has set the ground running in his position. Jill has worked hard to reach out to line staff this year. She and Megan reached agreements with the unions. She has done a better job of recruiting talented personnel, Rob Failey, for example. Her reorg has withstood the test of time and I am certain that if it did not, Jill would adjust accordingly. Community leadership and public relations. Town manager continues the town's communication with state and county entities to serve the town's interests. And working with the communications coordinator keeps citizens informed of town business and activities. Jill's performance in this category is stellar. She commands respect among our local business leaders and outside Chatham as well, amongst other civic leaders and organizations. And Jill is well-regarded in her field, both in regional and state networks. She has worked with leadership in the Cape and Islands Municipal Leaders Association to affect better communication with the Cape Cod Town Managers Association. Kudos on the main sheet and the monthly managers report, which we'll hear about in a second as well. Town operations and infrastructure. Overall, the town manager has maintained a smoothly-run and effective town government operation with the ability to move in quickly to address emergent problems. The town is well-run. As noted in the preceding section, Ms. Goldsmith is an excellent manager. It appears to me she has real command and oversight of everything that goes on in this town, whether directly or by delegation. It also appears to me that she sees municipal government as essentially a service function and that delivery of those services is something needing constant improvement. I think that's a wonderful remark. So, you know, I summarized it and read all the remarks, I summarized some of the best ones, I thought the ones that hit home for me. And certainly that's an excellent summation and you got an excellent review. So congratulations and comment, Jill. I love reading the comments from everybody and I did circulate all the comments of everybody earlier.
Thank you. I know how much time and thought that all of you have put into it, including when we meet individually, and it's really nice to have that connection with each and every one of you. So I really think, I thank you so much. Just a couple of comments that I have, so my thoughts on my evaluation aren't just a look back, but it's also a look forward. So I really appreciate the opportunity to hear from you individually about your priorities and to be able to communicate what I see are organizational goals and culture, and I really appreciate your feedback. I take this strong performance and thank you so much, the evaluation of not just mine, but of the entire town workforce that keeps Chatham the special place that it is. And I'm really proud of the team that I've built and retained, and our community partnerships, and maintaining a sense of community for the past 11 years. And we've had many successes collaborating, collaboratory, I guess you should mark me down for all my oral skills, collaborating with the select board on your goals and initiatives, the initiatives of the committees, and also maintaining our own high-quality standards to provide day-to-day service to the public. The select board's demonstrated positive and respectful and support of relations with Team Chatham is very much appreciative, and it means a lot to us to have that support. And lastly, I want to thank you of our vote of confidence for me, for my contract extension. I'm excited to be the town manager. I love my job and I really appreciate my team and the community. So thank you so much for your support.
Okay, Jill, thank you. Thank you. Any further comment or questions? Okay. Thanks, folks. Thanks for your input. Good stuff. Everybody worked hard on it. Okay. Our last item on our agenda this evening is the town manager's report. Again, you know, kudos, and we always say this, and I hope folks do follow up if they get the moment. I know it's a tough time now to be looking at monthly reports when we have town meeting coming up and everybody's studying their warrant assiduously, I'm sure. But it is an excellent compendium of facts and figures and information that is posted on the town's website. And Jill, if there's anything you'd like to highlight, please go ahead.
So the town manager's report, a monthly report from March, is posted online and also in the packet. And I do want to highlight the efforts of our Channel 18 team as we're preparing for town meeting. And as a select board member, Shell had mentioned, we have our Channel 18 pre-annual town meeting show, and that is on YouTube. The link is here. And it's really, it's so professionally done. Mark and the team has us reading, monitors, and it's almost like, well, it is, a real production of like kind of a news team. So there's a lot of preparation for that with the teleprompter. And the team that made their presentations, for many of them, as Leah and Rob, Amy, this is their first time ever doing this type of production, and they spent a lot of time in preparation. And so I'm glad that you were able to see how helpful that was. I also want to note that we have some employee anniversaries. So employees of years of service as of for May. We have Dave Reddy, our fire captain, who's been here for 33 years. Bill Delane, our firefighter for 23 years. Sergeant Sarah, Police Sergeant Sarah Harris has been here for 23 years. Ron Friend from DPW Parks and Grounds, foreman for 16 years. Sean Ryder, police sergeant, 14 years. Alex Halella, our director of finance, 13 years. As you know, just about a week ago, she announced her retirement. So she will be with us until October 18th, definitely to close out the FY '23 budget and then help with the FY '25 budget preparation and budget summit. So we've worked very well together, as you noted. And the financial successes of Chatham and maintaining that triple bond rating is really hers alone. So I really appreciate her service and I know you do as well. So congratulations to Alex, who will be for another six months. And then just other items in here, usual items about how to sign up for the main sheet, how to sign up for recruitment and job postings. Ryan Darman, our IT manager, and Shauna have worked really well of helping with recruitments on social media. So you see the ad here that Ryan has put together for our executive assistant. We've been recognized by the Mass Municipal Association for our creative ads, and so far they've worked really well. But this has been a position that we are looking for and it's to serve the office of the town manager and the select board. So if you know anyone, an executive assistant, and we have plenty of other recruitment opportunities, especially for the summer and seasonal help. And then as you go through, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have on any of the various department reports. Again, this is from March, there's some current items in there, more up-to-date items within